There's a really badness here, like I don't think the flu- I don't think the flu missed-
Wait for Jean to get back before we call it to order.
The right- you know, because it's always like a guessing game with which one's going to be bad. I guess the flu missed didn't cover the right virus and so, and I think that this one hits kids and like these people at risk harder than it hits adults.
And everyone can just continue to file in. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of January 7th, 2015. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the exit gate is open, so you don't need to find a coupon. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held December 10th, 2014. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call the question.
Weber?
Yes.
Sanderman?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Pichum?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. All right, at this time, we have a special presentation and special guest whom we'd like to recognize. Marvin Kraut's wife Bunny Kraut and their two children DeeDee and Derry, and Bunny's daughter and granddaughter Andrea and Navia- Nava Hallpern. At this time, we're going to have Jean read a resolution in honor of the memory of Marvin Kraut into the record.
Thank you, and I really appreciate all of you coming. I think this is a great tribute to Marvin, and I really appreciate it. Resolution number PC 01429, whereas Marvin S. Kraut led our community's planning process for more than a dozen years as Planning Director for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County, coming to Lincoln after serving in similar roles in Wichita, Kansas, and Dallas, Texas. Whereas Marvin Kraut passed away on November 20th, 2014, following a brief illness. And whereas Marvin Kraut committed his life to putting into action progressive planning principles which bettered the communities he served and enhanced the quality of life for present and future residents. And whereas Marvin Kraut steadfastly brought together parties and divergent views in an affirmative and constructive manner with the community's long-term interests always at heart. And whereas Marvin Kraut, while serving as the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Director, worked tirelessly with 28 different commission members during more than 325 regular public meetings, let alone, I don't know how many others, and he, there were countless special sessions as well. And whereas Marvin Kraut oversaw the successful updating of the City-County Comprehensive Plan and the Long Range Transportation Plan in 2006 and 2011. And whereas Marvin Kraut led efforts to shorten the city's and county's development permitting processes, including streamlining the PUD ordinance, reducing application review times, simplifying sign standards, reducing bond requirements, and decreasing front and yard requirements in many commercial industrial districts, and the list could go on and on, but I won't bother with that, because it would go on. And whereas Marvin Kraut backed stronger neighborhoods through adoption of enhanced neighborhood design standards, coordination of the downzoning of eight core Lincoln neighborhoods, preparation of various neighborhood and subarea plans, and augmentation of the city's landscaping and screening standards. And whereas Marvin Kraut promoted the widespread integration of digital automation throughout his planning and development process, such as introduction of paperless applications, the expansion of geographic information systems technology, and he expanded use of the Internet as a tool for public involvement and communication. And whereas Marvin Kraut brought a positive attitude to the office each day, this in the face of being a lifelong Chicago Cubs fan. And in so doing, he embodied his core beliefs of respect, kindness, and the dignity of the human spirit. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission that the appreciation and gratitude of all are hereby extended to the family of Marvin S. Kraut. In recognition of his dedicated, loyal, and respected service and contribution to our community as the Planning Director for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County from September 3 of 2002 to November 20 of 2014, dated this day, 7th day of January, 2015.
It was an official resolution of the Planning Commission, which means we need to have a motion and a second and a vote on the motion approving the resolution. So do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second. All right. Any discussion? I think Jean said it all, so let's call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Sanderman?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Pichum?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Yes, and that motion carries nine to zero. Thank you very much. All right, and now we'll ask for Marvin's family to come forward and receive the plaque from the Planning Commission and a city medallion from Commissioner Baird.
When I first spoke into this microphone some seven years ago, it was the beginning of my professional relationship with Marvin Kraut as a new nominee to the Planning Commission. And I was nervous that day, but being asked to present a medal to you, his family, feels like a much bigger assignment, one that I never wanted because of the reason we're here, but it's such a privilege. The medallion is a, is an honor bestowed upon people who've given great service to the city. Marvin, of course, was that person. I'm here representing Mayor Beitler, but really, I think I'm representing all the citizens because Marvin touched so many citizens. I think one of the things that was really marvelous to see in the wake of his passing are all the people who came forward, not just all of us who got to know him very closely, but, but even citizens who, who just interacted with him once or twice. A few of those people shared some comments with me. I thought I'd just read a few of them to you all. A gentleman named Nathan wrote and said that this was terrible news. "When I first moved to Lincoln about three years ago, I was interested in planning as a possible new profession. Marvin took the time out of his busy schedule to meet with me and offered wonderful and insightful advice that I carry with me today. He will be sorely missed in Lincoln community." Another citizen, an older gentleman, wrote that he was a true gentleman, and this is a real loss for Lincoln. Another person who attends many of our public meetings but has no official role said, "I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Kraut on a few occasions, and he was always nice, intelligent, and treated me with respect. He seemed interested in my ideas, even if they were just ideas. I will miss seeing him, and my heart goes out to his family and friends during this time." All of us, I think all of us, our heart goes out to you all. We miss him, and it is my distinct pleasure and privilege to give you this medal posthumously for Marvin Kraut.
Did you want to say anything? Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for allowing me these few minutes, and that's all I'll take, just a few minutes. But I wanted to mention one aspect, particularly a word that I associated with Marv in his role as Planning Director, and that was passion. He had such a passion for Lincoln. It was a very personal connection that he had. And it took a great deal of his time and his energy, and I resented it. But now that I see, now that I see what it wrought, and I can see it everywhere, and when spring comes, I'll really be able to see it. I'm looking forward to that. I'm so glad that he had an opportunity to serve. Thank you.
All right, that ends our presentation on Mr. Kraut, and so if those of you that were here for that presentation would like to take this opportunity to leave before we move on to the rest of the agenda, you may do so. All right. Moving on to our regularly scheduled agenda for today. The Planning Commission action today is final on item number 4.5B, Special Permit Number 14054. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with the city clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The next item of business is the Consent Agenda. However, all items on the Consent Agenda are being removed, and we'll have a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda due to additional information. There are no requests for deferral on today's agenda. We will now proceed to the public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant then will be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff then will be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the Commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jean, please call the first public hearing item.
Our first item appears on the Consent Agenda and has been removed for the purposes of additional information. It was item 1.1 on Page 1, Special Permit Number 1999B, an amendment to the Wilderness Hills Community Unit Plan to modify the requirements of the sign ordinance on property generally located at South 33rd Street and Wilderness Hills Road. The staff recommendation is conditional approval as revised. Again, we remove this from the Consent Agenda due to the new information. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed by the Commission?
I see none. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Kristy Icorn, Planning Staff. The reason why this application was pulled from the Consent Agenda was simply for the fact that there was an item missed on a change that was happening with the sign. The history of the sign is that there were plans for the sign submitted with the building permit, but signed permits don't go with building permits, they go with the signed permit. And because of the processes that, that happened, the sign got built and it didn't meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The changes that needed to be made to the sign were going to be very significant and expensive. The sign just needed to be shorter by about a foot and a half, and it needed to be smaller by about three feet. So the applicant chose, the only way to amend that or to change those requirements is to take the application all the way to Planning Commission and City Council for approval. The impact of this sign on this area is not significant in terms of an increase in size or an increase in height. It is, for the apartment complex, normally a sign like this would be allowed 32 square feet in sign area, and it would be allowed to be six feet in height. This particular sign is 32 square feet in this middle area, as you can see, but because there would be a little logo on these two columns, that would exceed the area of the sign by three feet, because they're about a foot and a half, square foot. The height, again, would be six feet, but because of the way it was constructed, it goes over that by a foot and a half. And so that's what this adjustment is for, is simply to allow this sign as it was constructed to remain. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't see any. Do we have any testimony from the applicant?
My name is Fred Hoppy. I live at 1600 Stony Hill Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm an attorney, and I represent S&amp;B Lincoln Apartments LLC, which is the owner of the Aventine Apartment Complex. Let me just quickly show you what the sign should look like when it's completed, and you've heard the story of the mistake that was made during construction, so we're just trying to bring this through the process, change the CUP to allow the sign that's there.
Get this.
The center part of the sign, Aventine and Wilderness Hills, is the 32 square feet. The concern we had on raising the size of the sign is the two As on the column. We prepared and, and because the columns are already built, we'll be berming up the bottom of the base to limit the length of the, or the height of the sign to seven and a half feet. The scale of the apartment complex is huge. It's a pretty big apartment complex. This sign is, fits in with that scale, even at the, even if it's over the sign ordinance, so we just would appreciate your approval on it. Thank you. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I don't see any, thank you.
Thank you.
Did we have any testimony in support of the application? Any testimony in opposition? Did we think of any staff questions?
I do have one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And maybe I should have asked the applicant, I'm sorry, Kristy. What is the normal, I mean, I know the normal process is to have a signed permit, so is this an out-of-town, maybe constructor that they're not used to the process, or?
I don't know that we can say why it happened. I mean, it's happened before where somebody has submitted a sign with their building permit, and building permits are very thick, and whenever the building inspectors are going through that, they're not looking at that page because that, there's not, there's an inspector for electrical and, and so on and so forth, so it was just simply missed.
My concern is just, I didn't know if, not so much to place blame, but just to see, you know, is there something that needs to be modified as to how these are looked at, but?
In the entire time that I've been in the department, this is the first time I've ever had to take a sign through the process in order to, for this sort of miscalculation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Kristy, if those medallions had been graphical motifs rather than logos, would we be talking about this today? Would it be part of the sign? Sorry.
It's likely. It, it sort of depends. I mean, if, if it's the logo for the apartment, and that's the logo that's going on the sign, then it's very clear that it's a sign. If it was some sort of an exhibit that really had nothing to do with the name or the character of the development, we probably could have said it wasn't. We didn't have to have that discussion as in-depth here because the applicant needed the height increase, and so just so that we're all clear and everything's cleaned up with regards to the sign, it was just easier to make sure that they had the square footage they needed to do what they needed to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Did the applicant have anything else to say? Okay. All right, we'll move forward with entertaining a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to thank the applicant for, I mean, this is an unfortunate situation that happened, but I thank you for submitting the pictures because that really kind of showed us the, the scale and how the sign came out of place with, with respect to the large apartment building that, that helped clarify.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Sanderman?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Pichum?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion for conditional approval with the revision carries nine to zero, and this is a recommendation to the City Council. Calling for public hearing again on the Consent Agenda, Items 1.2A and B, I'll call them together for purposes of hearing. Page 13, Use Permit 13011A, amending the Russwood Park Use Permit to increase the floor area to exceed the maximum height and to modify the parking requirements of the B2 Plan Neighborhood Business District. And Street and Alley Vacation Number 14013 to vacate a portion of the Russwood Parkway right-of-way containing approximately 1,200 square feet adjacent to Outlot A, Russwood Park 4th Edition. The use permit location is generally North 84th Street and O Street, and the street vacation is generally located at Russwood Parkway and College Park Drive. The staff recommendation is conditional approval on the use permit and a finding of conformance with the comprehensive plan for the street and alley vacation. These items were removed from the Consent Agenda for further information. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed by the Commission?
I see none.
Paul Barnes, Planning Staff. As Jean had stated, this request is actually two applications. One is to amend an already approved use permit, and the other is for a street vacation for a portion of Russwood Parkway. The use permit amendment is to increase the allowable floor area within the use permit center located at North, located at North 84th and O Streets, shown on this plan. There. So here we have North 84th Streets and O Street that runs east and west. And you may recall that earlier this year, a use permit was approved for a pad site directly at this intersection for the Aldi's Grocery Store. That floor area is 17,700 square feet, and that building has been constructed and is complete. So the request is to allow for additional floor area for commercial uses, one on a pad site located here, which is proposed to be a bank and office building, and then another pad site just north of the Aldi's Grocery Store, which would be for potentially a restaurant or other commercial use. The application includes two waivers or modifications. That is for an increase in the allowable height for the office building that's located towards O Street, to increase that building height up to 65 feet. And we know that this center is surrounded by rights of way, it doesn't impact residential neighborhoods, we do have frontage on a major arterial, and so for those reasons, we do support that increase in height. The other waiver or modification is for parking requirements, which is one of the reasons why we had requested this item to come off of the Consent Agenda. The application requested that for all uses within the center have a parking requirement applied to it regardless of use of one parking stall per 315 square feet of floor area. During that discussion and as part of that request, the entire use permit center was to have a joint parking agreement. We have new information that the Aldi's Grocery Store on Lot 1 is currently not part of that agreement, and so we are recognizing the fact that although they may be in the future, they are not today. However, we're still supportive of that parking reduction as long as there's the joint parking agreement on the other two lots. And in conversations with the applicant, they've demonstrated that they can still meet the parking requirements at 1 to 315 square feet. The other application in conjunction with this is a street vacation of a portion of Russwood Parkway. You can see on this exhibit, we have the boundaries of the use permit. This again is O Street, east and west. Russwood Parkway comes up here, and the vacation that's being requested is in the northwest portion of the center. And I'll note that along with this, they are proposing to dedicate additional right-of-way towards the south and west portion of the center. The reason why we're vacating and dedicating is really due to the fact that Russwood Parkway as a built street was not built in the center of the 80-foot right-of-way. And so where it was built actually shifts things like the public sidewalk and other streetscape elements onto and off of, and onto and off of, private property. And so by vacating and dedicating this right-of-way, it's going to clean up the line where the street was actually constructed and put all of those streetscape elements in public right-of-way. Are there any questions?
Maya?
So there's, the amendment is only to the use permit, the, the street and alley vacation is, is the same as in the package?
Correct. There, there's no amendment to the street vacation.
Got it. Other questions? All right. Testimony from the applicant?
Thank you. My name is Barry Lockard, and I'm president of Cornhusker Bank at 11th and Cornhusker Highway in Lincoln, Nebraska. We just want to thank you for the opportunity to come today and show you a little bit about our plans and what we're doing at 84th and O Street. Kent Steakrest will lay down a picture here for you of our building and the concept. For Cornhusker Bank, I won't take more than a couple of minutes here, but Cornhusker Bank came to Lincoln in 1960 from Landca, from Davie, Nebraska. And in 1960, Alice Dittman's father, George Frampton, was head of the bank, and later on, in 1975, Alice took over as the first woman president. In 1975, Cornhusker Bank was about a $9 million bank. And through that time period, along with John Dittman, who's in our audience today as well, the bank has continued to grow. And over the last few years, the bank has actually been able to double the size of its growth in terms of its asset size and its opportunity to continue to invest and, and help businesses and folks here in Lincoln acquire everything from housing to business financing to financial education. And as banking has continued to grow and continued to change, we have looked at where we're at with our corporate center at 11th and Cornhusker, which we've been in since 1979 for the last 35 years, and said, what do we need to do to plan for the future over the next 30 to 35 years? We had the opportunity to sit down with Dave and Mary Jo Livingston and Garrett and Debbie Brim, and talked about the corner at Russwood, with Russwood Crossing and the corner at 84th and O Street, and the opportunity for that corner to continue to be viable in a really significant way, not just with Aldi's, but also as an opportunity for Cornhusker Bank to come in with our center. For us, it's not just about brick and mortar, any more than it's about the bottom line at the bank. For us, as a community bank, and we're thankful that we're part of a great group of community banks here in Lincoln, it's really about investing in our community and helping to establish opportunities for us to continue to grow. That's why we call this a center. We call it a center for growth, a center for investment, a center for financial education, for us to be able to be in a platform that this building would allow us to- For us to be able to be in a platform that this building would allow us to do to create efficiencies and also create relationships. Mrs. Crouch identified something that means a lot to us, which is the personal connectivity we have with our community here. So the building itself allows us to do a lot of different things from an efficiency standpoint for our business. It sets up Cornhusker Bank to continue to be successful for the next thirty, thirty-five years. But more importantly, or just as important as that is, it gives us an opportunity to take the building and share it with our community as well. On the front part of the building, you see how the building is laid out with the limestone. We're really looking at putting finishes on the building that will allow it to have a presence at Eighty-Fourth and O Street. We understand the significance of that entryway into the city and what that means to Lincoln and as a community. We also understand when you look at that material from a steadfast standpoint over the years, we want something that's going to be solid and true. But then on the second page, as we talk about sharing the building, on the back end of the building is a community room. And when we built our branch at Apple's Way in two thousand and seven, we had the opportunity to put a community room there to share with nonprofits and some of our customers and found out there was a lot of great success with that concept. As a community bank, we want to be able to share this bank and this building back to our community. So we've added on to the building this opportunity for a community center for nonprofits and also financial education to be able to happen there. As I mentioned, banking has changed. Many of you probably do a lot of your banking transactionally through electronic means. What hasn't changed is the relationship and the opportunity to come in and sit down and talk about goal planning and having a seat at the table with our customers, not only in a reactive mode, but also in a proactive mode to sit down and provide a place where we can go and and help do that type of planning and long-range forecasting with them and provide for their immediate needs as well. So we're just thankful to have the opportunity to work with the Brims on this project and the opportunity to work with you to say, we've had a home here since nineteen sixty. Our corporate center has served us well at Eleventh and Cornhusker. But due to the great growth and the opportunities that Lincoln has seen, we've been able to be blessed by that growth as well, and we continue to grow. And this facility will continue to help us invest in Lincoln and be part of the community as we move forward too.
Good afternoon. My name's Kent Seacrest. Garrett Brim and Debbie Brim are back in the audience if you have any questions of them. Brad Marshall, our engineer, is also back there for questioning, and Boyd Batterman, who has helped guide us on many key strategic issues, is also with us. So if you have any questions of them. We had a neighborhood meeting on December eleventh. We invited twelve of our neighbors, and only the host person decided to come. They had to come and open the doors for us, and so we got to present to one person. There was no controversy at that level. Subsequently, we did get some communications from Coles, who are our neighbor to the north, asking several good questions, and we were able to give them several good answers. And just moments before I walked in here, we got an email from Coles saying, "Good luck with your project," and so I don't think they have any more issues or questions of us as well. We want to again thank the staff. Paul Barnes has worked extra hard. Steve Hendrickson, again, extra hard, getting the staff conditions all put together. Bob Simmering's been very helpful, as well as Terry Caffey from Building and Safety. And with the Planning Department's new condition two point one three, we're ready to go. So with that, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there testimony in support of the application? All right. Do we have any testimony in opposition to this application? Do we have any questions for Paul? All right. Seeing none, we'll move forward with entertaining a motion.
I'll call them separately. Use permit number one three zero one one A, amending the Russwood Park use permit. Staff recommendation is conditional approval as revised.
Move approval as revised.
Second.
Any discussion? Tracy?
Sorry.
You opened your mouth, so.
Well, I never know if someone else is going first, so. I'm going to support this project. Part of my consideration was across the street and down maybe a block is another office building, and so to me, it wasn't the height wasn't that big of a deal because I know that there's another large building over there. And I think that that will complement both sides of the road and look good together. This is an exciting area for improvement and an exciting time. So I appreciate everyone, and I really appreciate you guys having the neighborhood meeting even though no one showed up. So thank you for your time.
Any other comments? All right, we'll call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Sanderman?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
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 Carries nine to zero. Calling for action, street and alley vacation one four zero one three, vacating a portion of the Russwood Parkway right-of-way. Staff recommendation is a finding of conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Any discussion? All right, well, this, this part of the application certainly seems to make sense since the road.
Motion, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Move approval.
Second.
Very good to know. Okay, now I'll talk. This part of the application obviously makes a lot of sense, given that the way the roadway was built seemed to have been causing difficulty for what is in the public right-of-way and not, so I'm going to support the application. Call the vote, please.
Weber?
Yes.
Sanderman?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Yep.
Motion carries nine to zero. These items are both recommendations to the city council. To our regular public hearings, item number four point one on page thirty-nine, comprehensive plan conformance one four zero two five to review as to conformance with the comprehensive plan, a proposed amendment to the Lincoln Center redevelopment plan to create the Swanson Russell redevelopment project on property generally located at twelve oh two P Street. The staff recommendation is a finding of conformance with the comprehensive plan, and Commissioner Shear has declared a conflict of interest on this item. Are there any experte communications to be disclosed?
I see none.
This is an alteration of our existing downtown plan so that we can describe a project which is a necessary legal requirement should we arrive at a redevelopment agreement in the use of tax increment financing for the construction of a Swanson Russell building essentially behind the existing building. And the area is identified here. This is P Street. This is Q Street. Here's the existing Swanson Russell building. This is the parking lot, which is grandfathered. It doesn't meet today's buffering standards. And then the right-of-way that surrounds it. We intend to do and have begun talking with Swanson Russell. They were approached a number of months ago with hoping to move a growing section of their business to Omaha at quite good rates, and they wanted very much to expand in Lincoln if they possibly could. However, building in the downtown area is expensive and in the right-of-way as well. It's been to the Urban Design Committee. So even though we don't necess, we're asking for the area to be delineated, this is the purpose that we are doing that for. This is essentially the current design of the building that is under consideration, and it is this structure, which will cover the substandard parking lot that's there now, make a home for about thirty-plus employees, and add what we think is a very handsome connectivity in the downtown area. The downtown master plan as well as the comp plan are in conformance with this. The staff says so for the twenty forty plan because, as you know, the city should preserve and enhance downtown's role as the major office and service employment center. And this will serve that interest. Are there questions that I can answer for you?
I'm not seeing any.
Well, in that case, I'll leave you with this. This went to the Urban Design Committee recently, and it was one of the very few projects that we've sort of shepherded through that required one and only one visit. And the developer received any number of encomiums, as did the architect for the design. If you think about what's there now in that service parking lot, this will be a handsome addition to downtown.
Do we have any testimony in support of the application? All right. Do we have any testimony in opposition to the application? Questions for staff from Mr. Landis? All right, we'll move forward with entertaining a motion. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to say that, first of all, thank you very much for including the link for us for the Urban Design Minutes. I think our citizen boards are, play really, really critical roles at absolutely no pay. And I think many of us take the time to read all those minutes and look at the comments, and so thank you for including that, and thanks to them for reviewing it. And I intend to support this. I think it looks like a good project.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to thank Swanson Russell for staying in Lincoln instead of moving away.
Further discussion? All right, we'll call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Sanderman?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion, which is a finding of conformance with the comprehensive plan, does carry eight to zero, and this is a recommendation to the city council. Want to get Dennis back? Okay, calling for public hearing, item number four point two on page fifty-one, comprehensive plan conformance number one four zero two six to review a proposed amendment to the Antelope Valley redevelopment plan as to conformance with the comprehensive plan. It amends the previously approved Eighteenth and P multifamily redevelopment project to include the adjacent rights-of-way of Antelope Valley Parkway, Eighteenth Street, Q Street, P Street, O Street, and N Street, generally located on the blocks bounded by Seventeenth Street, Antelope Valley Parkway, O Street, and Q Street in downtown Lincoln. The staff recommendation is a finding of conformance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any experte communications to be disclosed?
I see none. Thank you.
The planning commission, David Landis, urban development department director and the applicant in this case. This is the existing Aspen project, which this commission would have seen and has in fact passed the city council. It passed with the existing boundaries that are here in the cross-hatched area. It does not include that which we are seeking a change for today, which is this long-armed T, if you will. All of it city right-of-way, no private property. The development itself looks like this and is expected to be used by young professionals and students. And at the time when we first brought this project to you a number of months ago, we designed and drafted the boundaries along the lines that you previously approved. After that hurdle was leapt, it was clear that the N Street bike path had a hole in its financing, sufficient that we could not do the design that we had commissioned and sought to do. This was of concern to the developer of this area and this project. And the developer said, "Look, we are using tax increment financing, but we would use a portion of our tax increment financing if it would allow you to cross the finish line with the protected bikeway on N Street." And the reason is, the kind of people that we have would very much like to be able to get to the recreation use of the Antelope Valley Trails. They'd love to be able to get down to the Haymarket with the protected bike way, be able to use the rail yard and the arena, and then get to the Jamaica Trail to the west. We very much hope that our customers park their car and walk to campus or ride their bike to campus and use their bikes as much as possible, which is why in their design they have a rather considerable amount of bike parking as part of that design. So in the redevelopment agreement, which the city council has already passed, the developer says, "As part of its residential housing, the redevelopers committed to promoting the use of bicycles as an alternative mode of transportation and has included bicycle facilities in each of its buildings," therefore, "for residential housing where its tenants can lock and stir their bicycles." "Developers requesting that the city support its effort by constructing the city's proposed N Street cycle track." "Redevelopers requesting that the city use a portion of the available TIF bond proceeds to be set aside below to fund all or a portion of any shortfall in the city's revenues to construct the N Street bike path." This piece allows us to cross the finish line. That finish line is good for the city, but it's also good for this developer, which is why we ask to come back and make these adjustments to the boundaries to take in a kind of value that the developer very much hopes that the city will have in place that they can make use of at their location that they're here now, that they will be occupying shortly if they get to their building process as quickly as they'd like to. Other questions?
I don't see any.
Thank you.
Do we have testimony in support?
And chair members of the commission, my name is Tom Houston. My address is two three three South Thirteenth Street, Suite nineteen hundred here in Lincoln. On behalf of Aspen Heights, which is the developer of the project at Antelope Valley Parkway and P Street, I want to reiterate the support of Aspen Heights for this plan amendment. My client envisions that its project will contain one hundred and eighty-two dwelling units, which will house approximately six hundred and thirty people, many of whom will be walking and riding bikes in downtown Lincoln, and we support the addition of this area to the redevelopment plan so that we can help facilitate that N Street bike path. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Tom?
Thank you.
Do we have testimony in support of this application? Testimony in opposition? Questions for staff? All right, we will move forward with entertaining a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Supporting the N Street bike path seems like a really excellent use of TIF funds, and that, I love to see that. It helps me support what was already, support further what was already a great project.
I'm very happy to see the development community and urban development come forward to, you know, solve a finance issue for something that's a great development for the city of Lincoln. I think it's a win-win for everybody, and I'm happy to support the application.
Call the vote, please.
Weber?
Yes.
Sanderman?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
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 Shear?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Also a finding of conformance with the comprehensive plan, and this is also a recommendation to the city council. Item number four point three on page sixty-seven, text amendment number one four zero two one, amending section twenty-seven point seven two point zero eight zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to exceptions to front yard requirements to provide for a reduced commercial front yard setback in the O one Office District and the B three Commercial District where there is an abutting residential district along the same block face. Staff recommendation is approval. Are there any experte communications to be disclosed?
I see none. Thank you.
Yeah, I better have one.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I attended a neighborhood meeting where this was kind of discussed. I guess I was going to disclose it on the next one, but this is discussed there too. Hold on. Sorry, I wrote it on the wrong page. Do you remember the date of that meeting? December twenty-second?
Yeah, Monday before Christmas. Good afternoon, Kristy Icorn, planning staff. We have on today's agenda an application for a text amendment, and we have an application for a change of zone. Both of the applications are by the same applicant, but they are different things. And that's because the text amendment is going to affect future developments, not just this development. The text amendment that has been brought forward is a mechanism that would allow us to improve development in commercial areas that do not have a lot of depth in the commercial area. In particular, areas like University Place often have one hundred and fifty feet or less of commercial zoning along arterial streets, and it can be very difficult to redevelop those sites when you have restrictions based on residential zoning that's adjacent to those one hundred and fifty-foot depths. Over the last few years, we've talked about mechanisms that could be utilized that could be utilized in order to relieve that burden. And we've had some meetings, some committee meetings in the past where we talked about solutions. And one of the solutions that has been proposed in the past is one that looks like this. And I find this to be much easier to look at than to try to read in legislative format. We believe we've captured it in legislative format, but this is the intent. And that is, when you have a commercial development that's on the same block face as residential, today, that commercial is required to have the same front yard setback as the residential that's adjacent to it. And that could be 25 feet, that could be 30 feet, or it could be 20 feet. And this, this regulation has caused some problems in the past because even if you have houses in that residential zoning district that maybe sit 10-foot from their front property line, the commercial, the commercial zoned area still requires a setback of at least 25 feet or whatever the adjacent district is. So, in order to maximize buildable area and to encourage redevelopment in our older areas, we developed an idea that where there would be a transition from the commercial to the residential, and that is a two-to-one step-back method. This is a method we didn't just pull out of the air. This is a method that has been used in our zoning code for a long time, but we generally use it with increases in height. So, if you want to go over the height of the district in some districts, you can do that as long as you move back a little bit from, a foot back from the residential lot line. So, we apply that here, the same as we apply it to height. Although this is the applicant's text amendment, the applicant has worked with the city to develop the language that would apply to this text. Does anybody have any questions about the text amendment?
Kristy, is this one of the text amendments we've discussed in reform proposals?
This was one part of reform that we had discussed in order to help facilitate redevelopment.
Any other questions for staff? Testimony from the applicant?
Members of the commission, Derek Zimmerman with the Baylor Evans Law Firm, 1248 O Street, Suite 600. And I'm the applicant on this proposed text amendment. And Kristy is correct. I worked with city staff on this. This is not something that just came out of thin air. This is something that has been looked at previously. And if, when you're, there are already a number of mechanisms for setback reductions in other zoning districts or if you do PUDs or community unit plans, there's, there are ways to reduce the front yard setback requirement. The problem is, is that they are, they require more acres than this development has. And you're going to run into a lot of redevelopments that don't, that aren't five acres, that aren't a larger size, that, that you need to have the setback reduction. And while we're also trying to keep the existing residential neighborhood in mind, we think it accomplishes it with the, the step-back method and, and it's sensitive to the neighborhood. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Derek? I don't see any, thank you. Do we have additional testimony in support of the application? Do we have testimony in opposition to the application? Any questions for staff?
I'd like to make a clarification.
Sure.
I should have mentioned this a few minutes ago, but I forgot. This text amendment and this, this particular regulation applies only in the B3 and the O1 zoning districts. And that's because both of those districts today, by right, would have zero-foot front yard setbacks if they weren't on the same block face as a residential zoning district. The applicant originally had only asked for the B3, but the B3 and the O1 are so similar and are found in similar type areas that we felt that those two districts would benefit most by this change.
Thank you. We will entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
No, I'm troubled by this because when we were working on the reform initiative and working on the revision to the comprehensive plan, there was general consensus that these items needed to be brought forward as a package. There were balancing acts that went on between making it easier to redevelop in the city and also protecting neighborhoods. And this is a component of all of that that we reviewed in the reform initiative. And I'm afraid we're going to be chipping away at what had been intended to be a balanced package of, at the same time, neighborhood protections and improvements to the ability to redevelop in the city. I have reservations about this.
Other discussion?
I have to admit, when I read this, I did have the same reservations that Michael's stating, that we had agreed to, well, I shouldn't say agreed to, we had discussed bringing reform together as a package because we didn't want to piecemeal it. And I think this is piecemealing it and I'm, I'm worried about the effects that might have on the rest of the reform package.
I agree, I think a key word that we kept using was balanced and I think only bringing one piece of the equation together, to me, doesn't feel balanced. And what can look very reasonable within a certain set of circumstances can set a precedent for down the road that can have ramifications that, that we're not seeing right now. I guess personally, I would like more time to think about this and I'm not sure I'm in a position to approve it at this point right now.
All right, well, I'm going to support the application while stating the same reservations as the other commissioners have stated. I think reform is a very important package as a package. That said, I always hate for perfection to be the enemy of the good. And in looking at this, I think we have to weigh whether this particular text amendment makes sense in general because that's what's before us. Reform isn't before us, this is. And there's a definite project that, you know, appears to be of benefit to the city in a place that's hard to redevelop. And in this context, I think, you know, the applicant should have the ability to move a project forward and have that be reviewed for its merits. And I think this text amendment has been one of the elements of reform that has always made sense, even in the absence of some of the other balancing things that we have wanted to do. So, even though I'd rather see reform move forward and urge us to push that along, I, I still am going to support the adoption of the text amendment. Lynn?
Just want to add one thing, as far as the reform package, we were working on that last summer or into the fall and it got delayed to maybe later this year. But there is no definite date when we're going to take it up and address it. So, we can't just sit back and wait for something that may happen in the future that's not even scheduled to happen in the future before we move on with the city's business and, and move forward with things.
I guess I would like to point out that we were supposed to go forward in December with this, but because of some pushback, we decided to delay that. And I think that if we would have went forward, this might not be an issue now.
Well, and I, I would just add to that, that I think everybody has a good point. Lynn certainly have a good point. And part of that would include that, you know, in looking at the city's business, if I have concerns about it, then this is the mechanism for me to voice that concern, just like it's mechanism for you to voice your support.
Do we have further discussion? All right, we'll move forward with calling the vote.
Governor?
Yes.
Sanderman?
Yes.
Cor?
No.
Cornelius?
No.
Beacham?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
Motion carries six to three. This is a recommendation to the city council. Calling for public hearing, item number 4.4 on page 73, Change of Zone Number 14029, from O2 Suburban Office District to B3 Commercial District on property generally located at South 48th Street and Pioneer's Boulevard. The staff recommendation is approval, subject to a conditional zoning agreement and we have submitted some revised conditions of approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed by the commission?
Yes, I have the same one as before, a neighborhood meeting held on 12/22 that was attended by staff.
Kristy Icorn, planning staff. Okay, so to talk about a specific development now, this is the northeast corner of South 48th and Pioneer's. And this application is for a change of zone from O2 to B3. And I think it's important for us to keep in mind that that's what the application is for, it is for a change of zone. It's not a special permit and it's not a use permit. When we talk about the change of zone from O2 to B3, what does that mean? Our comprehensive plan in general says that we shouldn't encroach into residential neighborhoods, but it also says that we need to encourage and enhance redevelopment within our communities. And in the past, what we have done with situations like this is we can help facilitate that redevelopment by utilizing a zoning agreement. And that zoning agreement can put certain conditions on uses as well as require a site plan that would be followed with the change of zone. And so, essentially, it works very similar to having a special permit on a property. So, this is the corner of South 48th Street and Pioneer's. The existing building where Lamar's and Colby Ridge is today is currently zoned B3. To the east of that are two buildings. One is an old dentist office and one is a house. And it's my understanding that both of those would come down with the, with the proposed development. The applicant is requesting that this corner here be the rezone from O2 to B3 and so you would have one large B3. We have residential here to the east. We have worked with the applicant on some conditions that would be appropriate for this particular site in order to allow for the redevelopment of this site, even though it does encroach slightly into the res, well, it doesn't actually encroach into the residential area, it moves closer to the residential area and eliminates the O2 buffer that's there today. What you have in front of you are a list of conditions that would be included in the resolution and would be included in the zoning agreement. And those conditions include things such as adding street trees, which would not normally be required with a change of zone. We would be adding four on Pioneer's and one on South 48th Street. We are asking for some additional landscaping and some additional buffer between the residential and the commercial. Normally, the B3 zoning district requires a five-foot side yard. We're asking for a 10-foot side yard between the eastern property and the building. Let me show you a chunk. Between the eastern property line and the building. And the reason why we were requesting the additional side yard setback was so that there would be plenty of room to include screening and landscaping along that property line, whether it be done through vegetation or whether it be done through a six-foot fence. We are also requesting, and making it clear that parking lot screening is required along this corner and that that would have to meet current design standards for parking lot screening. After speaking with the health department, they, we came to a conclusion that it would be best not to have cabinet shops that conduct refinishing activities on this site, nor motorized vehicle wash facilities or motorized vehicle repair and service facilities on this area that is being rezoned from O2 to B3. And that is because those are uses that tend to be nuisance uses and can often cause problems when they're located too close to residential. We also have eliminated accesses to this site. Today, there's three access points trying to get into this, this B3 lot. And so, this site plan allows access, one access on Pioneer's and then they would use the existing access point on the alley on South 48th Street. The applicant has also agreed to provide some transparency along Pioneer's. There would be at least a 50% transparency for this building here. And this is a separate building, although it's adjacent to this building here. And to provide at least a 30% transparency on this building. And I believe they have some elevations that they would show you on how they're going to provide that transparency. So, the agreement then would say that the, the elevations that they are going to go over with you, which would look like this. Nope. Got that one?
Yep.
Oh, so if you're standing on Pioneer's and you're looking north, this is what you, this is what you would see of, of that building. And, and the applicant's going to go over all of the elevation so that it makes sense as to what you see. But basically, that they would be providing, let's look at the bigger picture, I think it's easier to see on the bigger picture. Okay, so if you're standing on Pioneer's and you're looking north, you would see this facade. And what we would be asking is that they, when they come in for a building permit, that they substantially comply with what they have shown here on this exhibit. So, those are the conditions that would be included in the zoning agreement. Other than that, I don't have a lot to add. Does anybody have any questions?
Tracy?
I have a couple. One is about the, combining the access points. In the staff report, it mentions that if there's a significant number of crashes from the left, taking left out of there, that they're going to put up a barrier to prevent, prevent those left-hand turns. Who will have to pay for that? Will that be the city?
I believe, it's my understanding the city would do that because it could be way in the future when that might happen and they don't even know for sure if it would happen. But they wanted it to be, the comments to be included in the staff report so that the applicants and the city and everybody was on the same page to know that that wasn't a guaranteed full access point into the future.
My other question has to do with the health department's concerns about the cabinet shop. What's the difference between a woodworking shop and a cabinet shop?
The chemicals that they use in refinishing that wood. And I have talked with the owner of that building and asked if they were doing any refinishing of the cabinets that they were constructing and he said no.
They're building from scratch.
Right, and I let him know that because of this requirement, that he would not be able to do any finishing of, of that product and he said he understood that as well.
Okay.
Kristy, I have a couple. Is the alley paved?
The alley today is, is it, no.
Would it have to be if, if we're using it as an access or not necessarily?
They will probably have to pave it when they come in for their building permit, but I, I couldn't say for sure.
Okay, and then, I wasn't sure from the plans, are the two buildings, can we drive between them? Is that a walkway? Maybe it shows better on Derek's notes here.
On this particular plan...
How do you?
There is...
So, the space between the, yeah, right in there.
It's a walkway to patio.
Okay.
And the applicant can address that, but I believe they intend to have some outdoor seating there, maybe.
Okay.
Just kind of more of a communal area, but there is no, there is no driveway through there.
Okay, and then, it doesn't look like this is the intention from this plan, but just so we understand kind of for future. Is this design with today's current requirements, would someone be able to put in a drive-through back here?
I think it would be very difficult and part of the reason for that is because of limited access on these two points and the parking requirement for this site. I think they're just about right at the park, they just need the parking requirements. So, in order to do a drive-through, it would be pretty challenging to do that and keep all of the parking stalls that they're showing on the plan.
Okay, and then, can you, I'm going to, I'm going to quiz your knowledge here. Do you know off the top of your head, what are the height differences that are allowed between the office zoning and the B3?
I don't know, but I can find out for you.
Okay, if, if I can make, and then, could you also tell me the differences between the B3 and the, and residential? That would be awesome if you could just come back up.
Yeah, we can do that, no problem.
That'd be awesome, thank you. Oh, sorry, one more. Uses, can you tell us what uses are allowed in B3 generally that are not allowed in the office zoning?
The O2 zoning district is really only an office district. So it would be office-type uses. Whereas the B3 is a commercial district that would allow personal services. It would allow office. It would allow retail. It allows service stations, gas stations. It allows some automobile sales, but there's also requirements that you have to be 100 feet away from residential. So it definitely has a wide variety of uses, whereas the O2 is very limited in what you can do.
And just from my knowledge, residential, there are business allowances in residential too, right? You can... There are some businesses that you can run in a residential area, is that right?
Not without a special permit.
Not without a special permit.
And not unless you're a home-based business.
Okay. So restaurants?
Restaurants you cannot do in residential.
Okay.
No. Mostly the, in residential districts, daycares, residential healthcare facilities, those are the types of things that you would be able to do in a residential zoning district.
Okay, thanks.
Did the... Does the four-foot sidewalk eliminate any trees?
Well, the applicant's going to have to show us on a revised landscape plan that they can fit a four-foot sidewalk and still fit the necessary trees to meet screening requirements in the remaining six-foot of area along that east side.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kristi?
One more. Did Public Works have any... This is such a strange intersection for pedestrians, I think because the streets don't line up straight. Did Public Works have any recommendations on ways to make this a safer crossing or not?
No, not with this. I can tell you that there was a study that was done in this area back in 2007 and '08. I think '08 was when the report actually came out. And they had talked about potentially, in the future, doing a roundabout here. There are not currently any approved plans to do a roundabout in this area. But they've been exploring multiple options on how to improve this intersection. There's just not anything in the near future that they plan to build or have been budgeted for.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Testimony from applicant?
Members of the Commission, Derek Zimmerman appearing on behalf of the property owners and the proposed developers of the project. I'm going to just look at the site plan for a second, show you what the proposed uses are, and then I'll address some of the questions that were asked of Kristi. So today, what you have, and I'll start here, that is the building as it sits today along the 48th and Pioneers intersection. That building is over 50 years old. It's from 1958. There's been some cosmetic updates done to it. But it basically houses the Lamar's, Colby Ridge, Goodrich Building. And then, to the east, you have an existing, it was a dentist office. The dentist has since retired. That is not open for business. It is currently being unused. And then, a residence. I don't know the age of the house, but it's not new. And the condition of it, it was just purchased by my client. The condition of it in the interior is such that it's not good, and it's just not usable in its current form, and nor is remodeling something that is economically worthwhile. Looking at the site plan as a whole, the unique thing about this project is that the current tenants that are there are going to stay. And with what we've proposed with construction, they will actually be in this space right here. And so they're going to be able to continue to operate in the old building while the new one is constructed. And then, this strip center will be constructed afterwards. And that is going to be just, there's one use that we are pretty confident right now. It's going to be an office use, an insurance-based building, insurance-based office space. The other spaces are open at this time. You know, the... Just, I'll jump a little bit to what Commissioner Beecham asked about in terms of other uses and drive-throughs and whatnot. The... Kristi Icorn was correct. The parking for this site is challenging, and I don't think there would be any feasible way we could have a drive-through because of the stacking requirements. I'm not an engineer, but that is certainly not within our current plan. What you see is how we plan on laying out the property. In addition, yes, the alley will be paved. It's going to be used as a drive-access to the cabinet shop facility, and as part of that, it will be paved. And it's not in a good condition right now. It's... The entryway is paved, but then you reach gravel pretty quickly, and this is going to be a significant improvement over what's there today. And the... There's talk about cabinet shops excluded uses, and we agree with that condition. And really, this is going to be used as a, it's a retail space. It's going to be showing cabinet work that is finished. The actual work itself is not in plans to be done there today. As part of the application for a change of zone, we also wanted to keep in mind the fact that we are, and it kind of goes off of the text amendment that was just before you, things that we worked with the city to make sure that the transition from commercial and residential was a seamless one and one that was positive. And the landscaping area is one thing that was discussed. Normally, in the B3, five feet is the only side yard required. We're agreeing to 10, and it will be used for just landscaping trees. There's going to be a walkway area from the parking area in the back to the cabinet shops, retail area, which is going to be in the front. And then, in addition, we have agreed to the transparency and an elevation that is substantially similar along the south side and, which is facing Pioneer Street. And that is, so the cabinet building is this right here, and then this is the Goodrich, Colby Ridge area. The reason why there was the identification of substantially similar is because, for instance, this may change from, it's currently a doorway, but that may change to just windows. Currently, the main entrance is planned along the west. And the reason for that is because we're trying to have space that is open to the north, a patio space that's covered. When you have people, a space that people can come to over the summer, be outside, and be in a place that gets you some shade cover, and it's a more active space rather than a space that faces Pioneer Street. And that's what we were looking for. It would be possible to have some open space facing Pioneers, but we think that's a lot less attractive of a use than for the patio area up to the north. It's a little bit further away from the street, and people can enjoy that a little bit more. The... We did work with Public Works on the access points. That is something that they suggested, and they reviewed it and they've approved it. We are eliminating access along Pioneers, which is always a positive in redevelopment projects to get rid of existing access points. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And that's seeing any?
Thank you.
Do we have additional testimony in support of the application? Do we have testimony in opposition to the application? Questions for staff?
I have answers for Commissioner Beecham. Okay, so, and I was thinking this before, and I thought that couldn't be right, but it is. The O2 zoning district actually has a lower height limit than the residential. They... The requirement in the O2 is 28 feet or 25 feet, depending on the pitch of the roof.
Okay.
Because it is a transitional zoning district, most residential districts, I think all residential districts are 35-feet maximum height. And in the B3 zoning district, you can go up to 45 feet, but the lot that is adjacent to the residential cannot exceed 35 feet in height. So it would, the cabinet shop cannot go higher than 35 feet in height because it's considered adjacent to residential.
Okay, so 45 for B3.
Correct.
But if you're in the lot next to residential, it could only be 35.
Right, right. The code says adjacent to residential, and it's not real clear, but it's always assumed the lot that's adjacent to the residential is where the lower height requirement would apply.
Do you know, what's the... How high is a two-story building?
Two-story building is usually 20 feet.
Okay. So 45 could be... Help me out, Dennis.
Probably three.
Three stories?
I don't think you can get four out of four.
Three and a half, maybe?
Yeah.
Or three and fancy top? Okay. Sorry. Put this in real people terms. Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Kristi? All right, thank you. Applicant rebuttal?
Just a real quick point of clarification. In terms of, we're talking about building height. These are all planned to be single-story buildings.
Thanks. And thanks for putting the height on the drawing. Appreciate that.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion.
I would just say that while I had reservations about the previous application, given that this body chose to recommend it to the City Council, I would say pending approval of that by City Council, I see no reason to stand in opposition to this application, so I intend to support it.
Dennis?
Oh, sorry, Dennis. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I obviously had a lot of questions on this one. I think this is in an old neighborhood that is in transition and can go either way, depending on the decisions we make. I like what they've done with this design. This is a tricky intersection for pedestrians and cars. It's right adjacent to residential. And although we may say, oh, well, but it's only houses that face Pioneers, there are people living in those houses, as live in a lot of our main thoroughfares through our older neighborhoods. But I like that this design is not super tall. I think they're doing a good job adding the extra buffer that they can to this project to try and create a buffer for the neighbors, and so I intend to support this project.
I want to add essentially to what Commissioner Beecham was talking about, but with a slightly different bent. I'm going to support the motion because I think that the change of zone will create opportunity for this corner, and I think that's a great thing in this neighborhood, especially when we have the chance to create opportunity on a corner that's been the same for 50 years, and we can make it better. But I do have a few reservations about, and I know that we're just approving the change of zone, but since we're creating opportunity potentially if we vote to approve this, I do have some reservations about how the development is organized. And I just want to make sure that we don't miss the opportunity because this is a great urban design moment for Lincoln on a very important corner. These are important corners when you have the chance to redevelop them. So if there's a way, as you guys go forward, to think about how to make this corner more contextual with what College View is. I don't really see that in the elevations nor the site plan organization. To create points for pedestrian access and entry and use around the site as well as within the site. I love the goals that you have with patios and things like that. But I think just to make this as contextual as you can on this corner in College View is a very important thing to follow up since we're creating this opportunity with the change of zone.
I struggle a lot with this development. This is not my favorite layout. I don't... I'm not an architect. I can't tell you why, but it's just not very appealing to me. I understand that it's a challenging site to develop, but I really feel like we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole here, that they're just trying to put too much in there. And I know they have to to make it profitable, but... That being said, I'm going to go ahead and support this based on a couple of things. Number one, I really appreciate the neighborhood outreach that you guys did. You guys did two neighborhood meetings, and I really appreciate that. It improves the access for this corner. It kind of cleans it up. I've walked that corner. I've placed signs on that corner for neighborhood events, and that corner is crazy to walk as a pedestrian. So I'm very aware of, I hope that kind of cleans up some access issues. My other things that I'm concerned about, and I know... I know Commissioner Beecham has stated this before, but not necessarily on this project today. But I'm concerned that we're setting a precedent when we're just tearing down two buildings to expand commercial and eliminating our buffer. You know, I have to take your guys' word for it, but that brick house looked kind of nice from the outside. I mean, there are other points in College View that look terrible. And so I hate to kind of set that precedent where we're tearing down what seemed to be viable buildings to expand commercial and eliminating that O2 buffer, because I think that's really important to have that buffer from the business to the residential. But that being said, I appreciate all the work you guys have done, and I will support the application.
All right, I'm going to also support the application. I like it when we are able to, along with the change of zone, have zoning agreements that get things like better street trees, landscaping, transparency in design along with the development. So I was happy to see the developer and the city come together with a zoning agreement like that. And I think it is a good development for a problematic corner in Lincoln, so I'm going to support the application. Let's call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Amelia?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Approval subject to the conditional zoning agreement. With the revisions, I assume, on the blue memo submitted today, that carries nine to zero. Also a recommendation to the City Council. We have our last public hearing scheduled for today. It starts on page 91, items 4.5A and B. Change of zone number 14033 from R4 Residential and O2 Suburban Office to B3 Commercial. The property is generally located at South 48th Street and Meredith Street. There is also an application for special permit number 14054 for the expansion of a non-conforming use for the sale of alcohol for consumption off the premises. The property, again, is generally located at South 48th Street and Meredith Street. The staff is recommending approval of the change of zone and conditional approval of the special permit, and the special permit is final action unless appealed to the City Council. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I see none.
Good afternoon. Brian Will, Planning Department. Staying in the same neighborhood, actually just about a block away to the north. We have associated applications. I note that we're not really having a public hearing on these today because there's any controversy, at least that I'm aware of, with the applicant and the recommendations or from other property owners in the area. It's really just that there's a history of this location. There's been other applications here in the past, and those are noted in the staff report. So we thought it might be helpful, just kind of walk through that history a little bit and bring us up to speed where we're at here today. So the area that we're talking about is 48th and Meredith. As I said, it's just about a block northwest of where we were talking about, 48th and Pioneers. On the overhead here, 48th Street, and then Meredith Street. Here's the existing convenience store. And so the area that we're talking about really is the whole south half of this block. We're talking about rezoning and essentially redeveloping this area. With the zoning history, let me maybe start with that and use this exhibit that the applicant included with their application. So we're talking about the south half of Block 39. Lots 11 and 12 are where the existing Casey's Convenience Store is now located. The lot adjacent immediately to the west is zoned O2. There had been, I think it was a two-story, an older two-story building there that did have an office use in it until recently. It's not there anymore. And then, the three westernmost lots, Lots 7, 8, and 9, have, 9 has a duplex on it, and Lots 7 and 8 have single-family dwellings. So, two requests before you today, the change of zone and special permit for expansion of non-conforming use. The change of zone application then is to change the zoning on over these four lots. Recalling, of course, we have B3 zoning already on Lots 11 and 12, so we would take the O2, the B3 zoning on Lot 10... the O2, the B3 zoning on Lot 10, and then Lot 7, 8, and 9 from R4 also to B3. So we'd then have consistent B3 zoning across the entire south half of Block 39. So, as you noted, you read the staff report, the planning department has recommended approval of this, so why is the planning department recommending approval of this? Sort of some of the discussion you just had about commercial zoning extending or intruding into neighborhoods, we're well aware of that, and the comprehensive plan talks about that, and it's not something that we take, take lightly, but then again, every change of zone application is a case in itself, circumstances are unique, and that would be the case here. And so what I've done, I've printed off kind of, kind of a zoom out, an overhead of the zoning pattern in the area, and here's the property right here that we're talking about today. And so if you look down South 48th Street, the old, the old College View, the old commercial district that grew up across the street from Union College, it's kind of an irregular, it's kind of an irregular pattern. Up here north, just south of Bancroft, you've got about a half a block, and then two complete blocks of B3 zoning right here, and then the area that we're talking about, it's a little more jagged, and actually, you only have the one lot here, sorry, the two lots here that we're talking about here today. And so it's, so it's very irregular. As we get down to Pioneers, the commercial zoning actually broadens out a bit, and we have this larger B1 area on, south of Pioneers. And so, part of the rationale, or part of the logic here is, well, in the case of the block that we're talking about today, we have the zoning district boundary line running right through the middle, middle of the block. Again, here's the property, some question, and we have split zoning through this block, B3, O2, O2, and residential. And I guess what we're suggesting in the staff report is, ideal circumstance when you're drawing zoning district boundaries, ideally, you would have them running down streets or through alleys, as actually is the case up to the north, there's a zoning district boundary in an alley. And so here, it's, it's very difficult, you know, to defend or actually perhaps not support, you know, change of zone applications when you have dwellings immediately adjacent to residential, that's not the ideal circumstance. And so, one of the things we suggested early on was, looks like it, in our opinion anyway, versus zoning surrounding this, it actually makes sense perhaps that all of this area eventually would go to B3 zoning. To that end, the applicant had a neighborhood meeting at Calvert Elementary School, invited the neighbors from the area to come and talk about what they were doing, and one of the notions that was suggested there was, how do the folks, the property owners in the area feel about changing the zoning of all of these residentially zoned lots to B3? There was no opposition to that, in fact, there was some support to that, and actually, it's this property owner right here on the end, the residence rule in Maine, has actually joined in this application. And so we think there's, we think there's good rationale for rezoning these lots here as part of this application, and therefore we're recommending approval of that. Relative to the special permit for the expansion of the non-conforming use, recall that back in 2008, when similar applications went through the process, again, we were supporting, we were supporting those applications at that time, and again, we're supporting those applications here today. And, again, there's more than, you know, more than one reason for that. This is the site plan for the property as being proposed by the applicant. Here again, here's 48th Street, here's Meredith, the canopy and the gas pumps are here, this is the convenience store, and again, the existing dwelling on the westernmost lot showing, being remaining at this time. I spent quite a bit of time in the staff report talking about character of the area, these old commercial districts like United Place, Bethany, College View, and sort of preserving that, you know, that character. What we first recommended was site plan for this site actually being flipped, and what we were talking about was locating this building out here, 48th Street, putting the canopies and the gas pumps behind it, something that we thought was more reflective and in keeping with that historic character, development pattern in College View as you move up 48th Street. Obviously, that's not the, that's not the plan that's been projected here today. However, that would be in an ideal, perfect world. We're still supportive of redevelopment in this area, even as shown, the site plan represents an improvement. The store that's there is obviously older and would benefit from redevelopment and rehab. I'd note that there is a driveway very close to the intersection of Meredith and 48th that will be removed, this exists, this driveway will be moved to the west, and the driveway right adjacent to the alley, so there is, there is a benefit relative to access. They will be replanting street trees along both 48th and along Meredith. There is a screen along the western edge between this development and adjacent residents, and so here again, like I said, the benefits outweigh any disadvantages, and so with that, we're recommending approval of this, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Did the applicant tell you why they wouldn't agree to the flipping of the orientation that you suggested?
Yes, and I, but he can probably do a better explanation of that than I can.
Brian, did you attend the neighborhood meeting?
Yeah, at Calvert, I did, yeah. Yeah, there's been, there's been actually, there's actually been several over the past, past few years relative to this site, but yeah, the most recent one here, just, you know, within the last month or two, I did go through.
What was the Neighborhood Association's take on this?
I didn't hear directly, didn't hear, didn't get a comment back from the association specifically, so I took that to be no objection. Again, we have property owners in the area that have actually signed on or become part of this application, so I take that on their part to be support.
You said, I think, Brian, that all of the property owners were okay with this rezoning, but your notes say of those in attendance, only Lot 7 chose to join in the rezoning?
Well, yeah, let me, well, let me clarify, I, I'm not, I'm not speaking for anybody here that's not speaking on their behalf or haven't submitted anything in writing. What I'm, what I'm saying is that of the properties here being rezoned, I mean, they're, they're either part of this application or have not objected, okay?
Okay, what about the ones who would be across the street?
The ones to the south, well, they're not, those properties are not being rezoned to B3, although we would have supported, actually, we recommended that it be part of this. I don't think those, I don't think those folks were ready to do that at this time, but again, there's no, there's no objection.
Well, if they're not ready to do that, that could also be seen as not supporting it, right? If they're not ready to change it to B3.
Well, I don't know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna suppose, I'm not gonna, you know, make judgment about that.
Right, the concern I have is that we're, you know, we're talking about changing a very large chunk here of residences, and you had mentioned, you know, the unique circumstances that demonstrate that make this need, this makes sense, and I'm still waiting to understand why this makes sense. You said, in general, good planning means that the same planning should extend all the way to the street, but you know, in a lot of these older neighborhoods, you're gonna have strips that have a business along the front and then a lot of housing behind, and so are you saying that whenever that happens, the entire block behind should by default go to a business district?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
What I'm trying to suggest is, I mean, there's, there's, there's principles that we apply, but we can't do that, we can't do that the same way in every circumstance. Each one of these applications is on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, as we look at this one, one of the goals in the comp plan is, is encouraging, is helping these older districts to redevelop, I mean, we hear that constantly, okay, that, you know, it's difficult to redevelop, or I've got, I've got 100 feet, I've got 150 feet, and so you've got to, you've got to, you've got to weigh those goals against each other. And like I said, in this case, it's not without precedent that we don't have commercial zoning a block deep, I mean, like I said, it's just, it's right here to the north.
Right.
So it's not without precedent.
Which is closer to the, the northern, to Prescott, which is a business district, right?
Well, I'm suggesting that this is part of the College View business, commercial district.
Right.
I'm suggesting from Pioneers up to Calvert, actually.
I guess I'm suggesting it's also part of the neighborhood district, I mean, I totally see where you're going, but I think that's what makes these older areas unique, you know, I mean, we definitely hear that it's difficult to redevelop, and we don't want to stand in the way of that, but we also hear that it's difficult to revitalize a neighborhood that's struggling when we, you know, put a, a large business district in the middle of a neighborhood that, you know, we have blocks of residential, we're two blocks from a university which are a college, which tells me there's gonna be a demand for residential. I mean, this one troubles me simply because, and I'm not trying to get on you, I'm just saying, you know, we're being asked to change the zoning on an entire block of properties here that are currently being used as residence, people are living in them, they're bounded on the other sides by a residential district, and so far, you know, the, the unique circumstances that, that make us want to do this are only because it would look nicer if we move it to the street, and so I guess I'm, I'm needing a little more, I mean, to me, if we're, if we're looking at doing an entire block, then let's sit down with the Neighborhood Association and let's plan out a redevelopment plan that, that makes sense and really works, rather than, I mean, are we looking at doing this for the alcohol spacing, is that the, the trigger that's needed here? Because if these are all being used as residences, I'm still trying to understand why we're being asked to change them to B3, other than that the line would be cleaner if it went down the street? Yes?
There was a lot there, I'm not sure where to start with that.
Okay.
Here again, I guess, I guess to, I guess to summarize, where, where we're at with this. We've got, we've got commercial zoning, and it's smashed up right against residential zoning, okay?
Which is why the O2 is there to buffer.
It's not that that, well, it's commercial zoning, I mean, O2 is commercial, and so it's not that, you know, it's not that it's running down, you know, that we've got a street between those or even an alley per se, it's right next door, and so in long-term, I mean, in long-term, the residential properties that are right, right adjacent to those commercially zoned lots, you know, what is there, you know, what, what's, what's the future for those?
Maybe the future is to live close to a, a, a business district, though.
It might be.
I guess I'm just saying, I don't want to just by default say, well, just because we have residential next to a business district, oh, we better turn it all into business district. I don't, I don't think that shows the appropriate foresight on our part to have good planning, I think, and you have this kind of situation all over town, and, you know, talking about setting a precedent, if, if we start saying, yes, we're gonna change this whole block that's residential, that's bounded on the other side by residential to business, simply because right along the edge on the busy street is business, I just don't see that justification as making sense to me. And so, I guess, to me, it appears that we are really wanting to change this to business so that we can have alcohol sales, and if there's another reason, I need to understand what it is, and if that is the reason, then I need to understand why the alcohol sales are so critical to this particular business in this particular location.
Oh, and I, yeah, I really didn't even talk about alcohol sales, per se, I mean, it really wasn't, it really hasn't been, you know, significant or, you know, compelling factor in this one, I don't think.
But isn't that what the special permit is for?
Special permit is for the expansion of a non-conforming use, it's non-conforming relative to not meeting separation for alcohol sales.
Right, and if we change this to a business district, then it has the buffer it needs to sell alcohol, or am I misunderstanding that?
No, it's there already, it's, the use is there.
Okay, so they could do it without changing this to a business district?
Well, no, what I'm saying, the use is there today selling alcohol, okay? This would allow them to essentially demolish what's on five of these lots, redevelop the site, put the store on the western edge of it, okay, and still continue to have alcohol sales there.
So they, the plan is to demolish this entire block?
Well, except the dwelling on the westernmost lot.
Okay.
Yeah, everything, everything is going to go, except that dwelling on the westernmost lot, right.
Well, maybe I need to just wait and hear from the applicant then and see, and then maybe we can talk when you come back up.
Well, I think that's fair, I mean, I'm sure we'll have some questions after that, but I'd like the applicant to have a chance to come up here and present their case, and then perhaps we can, right, right.
Maya?
Brian, in your opinion, how does this relate to, in kind of the future and big picture, to walkability services in the neighborhood from a planning perspective? Does this tie into those desirable factors that we, we talk about?
I guess what I'd say is, we think it could do better. Kristi alluded to the mobility audit that was done for the College View area several years ago, and like I said, one of the things we were suggesting was sort of flopping, flipping the layout of this site, you bring the store closer to the street, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic in this area, Union College, the neighborhood, a lot of pedestrian traffic, and having that, having the front of that business visible and accessible to pedestrians from that vantage point, you know, we thought was an advantage and was in keeping with, like I said, the historical development pattern of the area, as well as, you know, some of the key points that were mentioned in the audit. So, ideally, that's why we were, that was one of the reasons we were suggesting that layout, but, yep, here again, that's not.
And from a zoning perspective, if you took the, the layout out of the equation and looked at the zoning, do you think that ties in to services, walkability, growing the neighborhood from a future?
You mean expanding, expanding the zoning? Yeah, here again, I mean, it gets back to the issue, we've got, we've got some competing issues here. I think what we're saying in the staff report is, is overall, the benefit here and what, what is going to be done on the site outweighs any negative attributes that may be associated with it. So yeah, we think overall there's an advantage to doing it.
Thank you.
Brian, to kind of circle back to Maya's question a little bit, I know with the layout the way we wanted it, we thought that would improve walkability, but is there any improvements to walkability with the layout as the applicant has proposed it?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say necessarily improvements, per se. There will be, there will be sidewalks adjacent to both 48th and Meredith, there is gonna be a sidewalk connection off of, from Meredith to the store. The alley, for the most part, is gonna be paved, so, I mean, that's an improvement.
And the building is closer to the residential than the gas pumps?
Closer to the residential situated to the west, right.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. Testimony from the applicant.
Yeah, I'll just leave it alone.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Mark Hunzick, appearing on behalf of Casey's General Stores. We are in the process of hopefully expanding the existing convenience store that is at the corner of 48th and Meredith. It currently exists on two lots, and the driveway into the site from Meredith Street is barely around the corner and past the sidewalk along 48th Street. So, to the point of walkability, it seems to me that moving those driveways to the west will help in the congestion, both with vehicular traffic, trying to make that turn and immediately turn in to the pump area on, in this, on this site, but also to keep traffic. traffic from backing up across that sidewalk along 48th Street as it, as traffic tries to get in there. There isn't enough parking, and there aren't enough pumps to meet the demand for that, at that site today. We had a neighborhood meeting at which the, we had three neighbors who showed up, one of whom was the neighbor immediately to the west of the existing store. Now, just to try and give some perspective on the comments that we got from neighbors is, the other, one of the other neighbors lives or owns property on the south side of Meredith Street, and the third person who showed up, I think, was an owner of property on the north side of the alley. They each had kind of an interesting and unique take on the proposal. One who lives here said, I really don't like this alley being in such rough condition. I hope if you're going to do this, you will pave the alley, and we are. He said also, he was interested in whether or not Casey's would be offering their pizza, which they don't at this store because it's not large enough. The neighbor on the south side was interested generally in what was going to happen in this vicinity, and Brian suggested that it was possible that Planning Department might recommend approval if the owners on the south side wanted to join in this application and be rezoned commercial at this time. They chose not, he chose not to do that at this time, and I certainly was not going to put in an application on behalf of anybody who wasn't interested in doing it yet. However, it was brought to our attention that there was at least one, and I think maybe two of these properties on this, excuse me, on the south side of Meredith Street, which are owned by commercial property on 48th Street. And we think probably for the purpose of providing access out the backside and up to Meredith Street. We don't know that, but I think it's only a matter of time before you see an application to rezone some of that property as well. We are going to improve this alley all the way from 47th to 48th. We are going to expand the store to a modern store of Casey's new design, which is a much more attractive building, at least in my opinion, than the existing stores that they have. And I'll just, I'll put this up here just so you can see it. I don't know if I can back this out far enough to give you a...
That's the brightness mark.
Oops, excuse me, sorry. It's, it's just, at least to me, a much more attractive design. It will obviously be larger. It will not still, because of the requirements of the zoning ordinance, will not meet the 100-foot setback. That's why we have the special permit to expand a nonconforming use, because it still will be nonconforming relative to that setback. The owner to the west said he was willing to include his property if it would facilitate this project, because he was in favor of the project. He understood that the access, the circulation, parking, the need for more pumps, and for more products, including pizza, was something that he was in favor of. I think in a more broad scope of discussion over this, it's important to understand that these areas, as Brian said, every site's unique and every application's unique, but one of the more, one of the important things about neighborhood preservation and revitalization has to do with preserving housing stock, of course. But the desire of people to live in a neighborhood has a lot to do with the ability to access neighborhood services and goods in the way that you could if you were living somewhere else. And in many of these areas, you have commercial development patterns, which are just very, very restrictive with respect to modern requirements for commercial development. And you need more land to do that, and some places like this, it's necessary to expand the depth of the commercial zoning district in order to accommodate it. And I don't know how else to explain it, other than to say, you know, if we can't do this, then this store sits there in a really inadequate, antiquated, and relatively poor condition. Casey's does a good job of maintaining what they have, but it is clearly a substandard store for them, which may mean at some point they simply decide they have to find another place to go to do business in this part of the community, or it just continues to be a substandard store for them that is unfair, really, to the people who live in that area. And it's been true in areas where you've had, you know, drugstores, or small grocery stores, or other kinds of things we've had. I mean, think of the, I don't know how many different applications that had been, have been processed for expansion in small increments of both building and parking at Russ's IGA. I mean, it's just those kinds of incremental changes that take place that you need to be able to accommodate in order to maintain viability of those neighborhoods. And I think this is one of those applications, which, you know, on its face, you think, you look at the zoning district map, and you think, well, gee whiz, there's a lot of residential on the south side. Most of that is not owner-occupied. In fact, I believe all of it is not, and it is in the hands of people who are likely to want to have some other use for their property at some point in the future. So, I don't think this is going to be of any harm to the neighborhood. I think it's going to do a great deal of good for the neighborhood, and I would suggest that it's appropriate to approve it. And I'd answer any questions you might have.
Why couldn't we go along with the orientation that the Planning Department recommended?
Ah, yes, that. That was discussed, and from Casey's perspective, it's simply not the model that they prefer. It makes circulation of trucks more difficult and penetrates deeper into the residential area, if you will, with large transport trucks to service pumps, which are put back further into the residential area. But the people who attended the neighborhood meeting, when they were asked what they thought of that idea, said, oh, no, don't do that. That just puts the canopy, and the lights, and the traffic, and the activity, and whatever noise is associated with it, further back into the neighborhood, we don't want that. Keep the building here. It shield, particularly the man who lives immediately to the west, said, I want that building there, because that building will shield those lights, that building will prevent that activity and noise from being right up against my property. I don't want you to do that.
Okay. Can you orient me to, when you keep talking about the gentleman to the west, which of the properties in the application he owns?
Probably the site plan is the best to show you that.
That one there?
Yeah.
But I thought it's part of the application.
It is part of, it's the...
This is 48th Street?
That's the other one, okay.
Not 48th Street. This is the alley that's going to be paved. This is Meredith Street, and this is the house that's west, actually, not only west of the building, but west of the parking lot that's between the building and the, and his house.
Okay. And so the other properties that we can kind of see on the overhead, what's happening to those?
Which property? I want to...
Sure.
Are we talking about the aerial photo, or are you...
Yeah. Two lots in between.
Um, that'll all come down. Two lots in between which?
The gentleman that we were just talking about, and where the Casey's is currently.
Okay. If you, this is the existing Casey's store.
Uh-huh.
This is a lot which is owned by Casey's, and these two, this is a duplex and a house, neither one of which, if you've driven the area, are in very good condition, both of which are under contract to sell to Casey's for the purpose of, hopefully, maintaining, again, similar to the last application you reviewed, maintaining an ongoing activity in this building while the new building is being constructed here, and then taking those down and hopefully only having this out of service for the few weeks that it takes to remove the tanks, put new tanks in, and put up a new canopy.
Tracy?
Who sent out the notice to the neighbors for the meeting? You guys or city staff?
I sent it out. We asked for a list of those who would be notified under the ordinance.
In the normal standard...
We asked for the, for the list of people who would be otherwise notified of the change of zone.
When were the meetings?
Hmm. Let me think. We have, let's see, this is, it would have been before Thanksgiving, by a week or so, I think.
I'm pretty active in this neighborhood association because I have property that I plan to move into one day over there. I know that Casey's has been a good neighbor. They participate in our Celebrate College View event, but here's my problem. The Neighborhood Association was not contacted about this, and I have a huge problem with that. So, we can't just simply say anymore that, because we don't hear from someone, that means they're not in opposition, because that means that they might not have ever received anything. So, I don't know, I mean, I know that there's been some changes, but I know personally, I updated the contact information for College View. So why was the Neighborhood Association not contacted?
The only, the only reason I can give you is that it wasn't, that it wasn't on the list that I was provided. I asked for a list of people who would be notified of the change of zone and the, and the special permit, and as soon as it came, I handed it to my assistant and said, we need to get this letter to all of these people.
Mark, you, I'm sorry, Tracy, are you finished?
I'm steaming a little bit. Go ahead.
Mark, you mentioned Russ's IGA, and you mentioned the idea about, in addition to housing stock, we also need to have businesses that people want to live near. And I, believe it or not, I couldn't agree more with you. I think it's really important. I also think that the absolute best way to get businesses to be successful is to work with the people in the area to figure out what they want. Now, I know it's easy a lot of times to say, oh, well, they're just rentals, so they don't count. But, you know, a lot of our older neighborhoods, houses that were rentals, then get turned over, and people invest in them, and they become premier blocks of our city. So, I'm curious if you look to see if the neighborhood has a redevelopment plan that they filed to talk about kind of their vision, and if you worked with them at all on, you know, what are they looking for, and that kind of thing?
Well, as I said before, we have not had a separate meeting with the Neighborhood Association. We have sought a meeting with everyone who was to be notified of this change of zone. Some people came, some didn't.
Even given the alcohol spacing, you didn't feel like, I just, you know, it looks like there's some history on this question of alcohol spacing and stuff. I was just...
The question, as I recall, and I was tangentially involved with the, with the previous application to rehabilitate the store, there was some neighborhood opposition at that time, but I believe that it came from at least one, and maybe both, of the people who are now part of this application.
My other question, and I, actually, this may be a question for the applicant, not you, but can you tell me, alcohol sales-wise, do we sell singles at this store? Are we just looking at wine and beer? Do you have any idea? I know in other places Casey's, who I will also second, I think, is a really good neighbor in the city, agreed not to sell singles in, when they're so close to neighborhoods. I was curious if you know if that's the case here?
That's not a question that's been asked of us previously. I can ask that question. I would guess that if they have agreed to it in the past, they might agree to it here. I, I don't know, but I'm guessing that this isn't a place where they sell mass quantities of alcohol.
Well, it is right by college, so...
It is, but, you know, it's, I don't know.
Okay.
But I can, I can, I can get that question answered.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mark?
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have other testimony in support of this application? Do we have testimony in opposition to this application? Staff questions. I do have one. I just want to know what, what list goes out and who needs to be notified when there's an application, and why a Neighborhood Association wouldn't be on it?
Our list on any zoning action is, consists of those property owners within 200 feet of the boundary of the zoning action. And it also would include any Neighborhood Association who we have as a contact, as part of ours, part of our database. And so, I mean, I don't have that list right here in front of me. I'd be very sup, let me say, there's two things going on here. A neighborhood meeting was held by the applicant. The list that we generate as part of zoning action was given to them, and they sent that out. But as part of this, the zoning, the zoning applications in front of the Planning Commission today, the Planning Department sends those notices out to everybody on that list. Now, if there's associations in this area, if we have their contact information, I would be very surprised that we didn't send them something.
I know that we did.
Okay.
Perhaps when they asked for the list of property owners that would be notified, that may be all that we gave them, but our letter went to Greater South Neighborhood Association, one person, College View Neighborhood Association, two people, South 48th Street Neighborhood Association, one, and Pioneer Grove Condominium Incorporated, one, was the letter that we sent out.
Thank you, Jean.
So what I'm hearing you guys say is that if they only asked for the property and for the property owner's information, the Neighborhood Association would not have been invited to these meetings?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, no, what Jean is saying is perhaps that's what happened. My belief is that when they're asked, when they ask for a, when they ask for the list that we're going to generate, mailing list, we give them that same mailing list. So if it didn't include those associations, I mean, I'd be surprised, but I can't, I don't know what list was given to them.
Because somehow, we've got to get this figured out, because this keeps falling through the cracks, and it's really disturbing to me when I have an applicant saying that, yeah, we notified everybody, and we had a neighborhood meeting, and the Neighborhood Association knows zero about it. So where is it falling through the cracks? Because, I mean...
Tracy?
But they got the notice.
They shouldn't know zero, because there was a letter that's sent out.
From, from Jean, on the planning staff?
Yeah.
I mean, the flip side of this is, did the Neighborhood Associations contact the Planning staff at all?
How can they if they don't know what's going on?
But they got the letter from Jean.
They received a letter.
No, they didn't. That's what I'm saying.
But Jean's got the mailing list that it went out on.
We sent it to the contact information that we have on record for that association.
So you're contending that there was no city-generated letter?
I'm saying that the neighborhood was not contacted.
And there was three or four Neighborhood Associations that were just notified.
And I know exactly three of those people on there, who should have gotten it.
You know they're on our list. Are they our contact, or are they on the association?
No, they're your contact list. I verified it with Jean.
I don't know what happened then, I can't, I don't know.
Moving away from the notification issue, Brian, can we talk a second? The definition of encroachment, I don't know if we have a definition of encroachment, but when we're talking about concerns about old neighborhoods and not having businesses encroaching in, we're talking about here, changing residential to business, and having that business take up five city lots, which would then be across from several houses. And I understand that we can do it. I guess, I'm wondering, is there, are there other businesses in this area that take up such a sizable footprint? Is this sized appropriately for what we're doing? This seems like a... This seems like a really big project to me, and I understand that Casey's can be more successful if they expand. I also believe that sometimes in smaller, tight neighborhoods, a smaller store makes the most sense. And so, I'm a little concerned that, you know, we're changing a whole lot of zoning, and, I mean, five lots is a pretty sizable thing considering that it's got houses backing up to it and houses across the street from it. And I guess I'm curious if there are other things in this area that take up five lots like that that are this kind of development?
I have time ahead. I can't, doesn't come to mind for me, but maybe for somebody else, let's wait and see.
Just happened to quit flipping up and down Google. I mean, of course, in the southwest corner of 48th and Pioneers is the former grocery store that is now a multi-tenant building, and that takes up the entire block from 47th to 48th.
Right. That's on two major streets though, right? We're not talking about, I guess I'm talking about back kind of into the neighborhood streets like we would be talking about here. Because we're not talking about the corner of 48th and Pioneers. We're talking about in where there's lots of little houses tucked away.
So, from 48th to 47th, from Calvert to Bancroft, that entire block is basically all Union Bank. That's two more blocks, three more blocks to the north. Union Bank has been investing in several different buildings. They're scattered across several, but I believe they have pretty much that entire block, which would include the block face on Bancroft. Probably maybe what I could show is, I brought a very high-tech tool with me.
Which one do you want? This one?
Your skills are about as good as mine, and I really appreciate it because I love highlighters.
I think partly what we were trying to get at here in terms of the zoning pattern is the proposal that's in front of you is for, basically for this part of the block to be commercial. And I think what we have talked about and what we have heard from the rest of the neighbors is that the neighbors on the south side of Meredith, while they are not part of this application, are also interested at some point in commercial development. And so, what we view as really kind of the long-term plan for this area is that whereas you have the zoning line between the residential and the commercial on 47th Street, on Lowell and Meredith and on Pioneers, it would be, basically that would be the dividing line between the mostly residential, only residentially zoned west of 47th, and between 47th and 48th would be the area that would be commercial. There might still be residential uses scattered through in there, as you see in some other areas that are also residentially, or commercially zoned but have some residential uses. But that is the dividing line between the residential west of 47th and the commercial that is east of 47th. As I share your concern about having a bad zoning pattern in the area, but we don't see this as a precedent when the dividing line of 47th Street is the dividing line between commercial and residential, it's a pretty sharp line except for this spot here on Meredith where half of the block face, the block face closer to 48th is commercial and commercial zoned, and the other half of the block face from 47th East is residentially zoned and residentially used. So, we're looking forward ahead here that probably this entire block then, on both sides of Meredith, would be commercially zoned at some point in the future. But as Mark had said, the people on the south side didn't want to be a part of this commercial zone because we had actually encouraged, if they wanted to, they could have a free change of zone on behalf of this applicant, but they wanted to keep their residential zoning at this point. But there's an opposition to them having the commercial zoning on the north part because I think in part, they may be viewing that someday they would have commercial zoning on the south part of the block, which we would think would be appropriate if the north side of the block is commercially zoned.
So, I guess my comments to that would be, I'm sorry, I'm actually not opposed to this concept, but I have a couple of big concerns. One is, the idea of this clean zoning patterns makes me nervous because in older neighborhoods, you know, we don't always have clean zoning patterns. And I think it's a mistake to say, "Oh, well, we're going to knock down those five houses because it'll look cleaner if it's all, you know, all two blocks all the way up and down." I don't think that's the right approach. I mean, a lot of times, people in the older neighborhoods don't mind being right up against a business because they'd rather have those small little houses to walk by and street trees and that kind of thing. So, and the other thing I would say is, you know, that a big change like this doesn't just impact the people who own these particular houses. It has a big reverberating impact for the entire neighborhood. And neighborhoods like this one that have a lot of properties on the edge and that are trying to revitalize, you know, if we're talking about changing a big chunk of this, then I think it's important enough that we don't just say, "Well, we sent them a letter, they should have gotten it, it's their fault if they aren't here." I think that we should be saying, you know, "Hey, let's all work together and let's look at what this could be, and let's make something really cool." And not the, "Oh, well, you didn't pay attention, you missed out," but instead invite them to the table, you know? I mean, we've seen in a lot of neighborhoods what can happen when the development community and the neighborhood community work together. It's a win-win. And so, I would really like to see, I mean, if we're not sure if they got the notice, you know, one way that you can be absolutely sure to get their feedback is stop by the Neighborhood Association meeting. They love that. And neighbors really like businesses. I mean, they want good businesses. They don't see development as the enemy. I think the concern they have is when things happen without them being in the loop and having a chance. And I think in these older neighborhoods, it's really important that we work on that partnership rather than kind of the blame game of, "Well, you didn't send it," or "You didn't pay attention," or whatever. I'd rather us just find a way to work together because, I mean, this is, this is a lot of property that we're looking at, both for this particular application and it sounds like for a vision for the future. And so, you know, I think that's awesome to have a vision for the future. Let's bring everybody to the table and craft something that will have everybody lining up to support it. I think that sounds awesome, so...
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
I have one question.
Yeah.
As far as the property sits right now, we've got a business in a short little And what I see, I guess you can comment if you want to or not, what I see there is I see a business on a short little lot. The likelihood of that being redeveloped or invested in is not great. Therefore, the business is not going to get better. It's going to stay the same or get worse. And the houses that are next to it are not going to be next to what they would consider prime real estate, and the investment in those houses will not be great. It's just kind of domino effect on back end.
Yeah, I think that's sort of the practical reality that we were trying to describe here. Actually, the prior application back from 2008, they were trying to, Cabretta's, Cabretta's at the time, was trying to renovate and remodel this store. But they even couldn't do it on just the existing property. They had to use the lot adjacent to the west. And so, yeah, I think it's just, and that's part of this, we're just trying to acknowledge that practical difficulty of developing today's constraints, parking, everything else associated with it, on these small strips commercial development. I mean, it's the reality of it. So, I did want to mention something about talking to the neighborhood, and it goes back to that, to those prior applications in 2008. Actually, the planning department, we initiated. We had a meeting with the neighbors. It was all sort of mixed up, and in that context of those applications at the time, about this same question about rezoning a larger area, maybe even a larger area, and getting their take on that. I guess I characterized it as there was no opposition to what we're seeing here today. I just don't think anybody at that time was ready to, you know, jump in and, you know, be the individual that initiates it, short of the owner of the convenience store. So, I mean, there's, I just, I didn't want it to sound like, "We've just sent a letter and didn't hear from anybody and it was, oh, well." There have been, there have been several discussions in this area with the neighbors in this area. And so, I just wanted to make sure that the wrong impression wasn't given.
Brian, can you tell us, on a separate note, I was talking to Christie earlier about uses in the B3. Are there any restrictions if this were passed? On what kind of businesses could go in here? Let's say Casey's stays for a few years and then decides to move to a different location. Could a car wash go in here? Could, I think cabinet workshop is one of the ones, Christie?
Yeah, anything in the B3 district. There's no zoning agreement. Now, there is a special permit, okay? So, that reality needs to be dealt with, either living with what's shown in that site plan, or rescinding it, or modifying it. But perhaps somebody could rescind it if they didn't want alcohol sales, wanted to do some other commercial use. But you are still limited by only those uses allowed in the district.
But so, and I'm sorry, there's so many things, I'm starting to lose track of what we're being asked to do here, but we're doing a special permit, but then we're also doing a change of zone, right?
Yes, we're doing a change of zone over four lots. One of them is already, this one is already O2, but it's going to be three.
So, if we're just looking at the change of zone, like, let's leave the special permit aside for a minute. Basically, by approving this change of zone, we have, as it stands, there are no restrictions on the kind of businesses that could go in this B3, the way that there are on the last one where we saw, I mean, like I just said, we could have a car wash across from people's houses. We could have a carpentry or cabinet-making thing. There's none of those restrictions in this change of zone application.
Now, but understand, that other one, like I said, each one of these unique, that one has conditions because it's still adjacent to, on one side, residential, okay? That's not the case here. This one is going to be now be surrounded by streets. And so, that's the reason there is no similar zoning agreement.
So, it wouldn't be adjacent to a house, but it is still across the street from...
Street, but we have commercial B3 zone, I mean, up and down this area. It's across the street from, yeah, that's a different story. That's a different circumstance in our mind.
Okay. But just to clarify, if I live across the street and we pass this, and Casey's goes out of business and someone wants to put in a car wash across from me, that is acceptable in this current application?
With whatever requirements there are in the ordinance that apply, yes.
Okay.
But Brian, isn't that true for everything in yellow?
Right, it is. It's true for any of the B3 here in College View. I mean, up and down is correct.
The entire area.
Yeah, except that a lot of that fronts on business. I'm worried about the fact that it's right across from the residences where on 48th Street, it's a little bit different in my mind, half a block away facing a business street.
Yeah, I see.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Any other questions for Brian? All right. Do we have any applicant rebuttal?
I don't have any rebuttal. I just want to say, what Brian said about the previous meetings that have been held out here, I kind of jogged my memory of discussions that I had with Brian before we ever had the neighborhood meeting. I don't, I can't take an oath that our list included the Neighborhood Association because I don't remember, because I didn't, I don't remember even looking at it. But I do know that after talking to Brian about the neighborhood meetings that had taken place in the past, and his offer of inclusion of other neighbors in the change of zone, my focal point was on making sure that we got notification to property owners within that area. I don't recall, and I, we may have notified the Neighborhood Association, but I don't remember for sure. One of the comments, however, about the change of zone from one of the owners of property on the south side of Meredith Street, I think is fairly reflective of the kinds of owners who have the property on that south side of the street. He's not a developer. He's a small landlord. He has a piece of property, he may have more, but he has a piece of property there which he has no immediate plans for other uses. And he was concerned, "If I include this property in a change of zone, will it raise the taxes on my property and for a time when I don't really have an alternative use immediately in mind or a buyer for my property to do something else with it right now?" And the answer was, you know, "We can't tell you what the county assessor is going to do. It is possible that they would raise the taxes at least on the land value." And I think the decision that he made was, "Maybe someday this will be commercial, but I'm not, I don't have a plan for it right now, and so I don't want to be included." But he wasn't opposed to the idea of this property becoming a larger and better commercial use.
Does the Casey's right now, as you guys are planning the expansion, does it have a car wash?
I don't think so. I, no, I mean, there's no room for it. We don't have, we barely have room for what we're doing.
How many pumps are there right now?
I think there are two sets of pumps, if I remember correctly. Three? I'm sorry.
There are six locations.
Okay, there are three pumps, three sets of pumps, six locations.
And they have that currently?
That is the current situation. The new site plan would provide for six pumps and essentially 12 filling stations.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Is the alley paved currently?
No.
All right, other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll entertain a motion?
I'll go to call them separately, please.
Thanks.
Calling for action, change of zone number 14033 from R4 Residential and O2 Suburban Office to B3 Commercial on property generally located at South 48th Street and Meredith Street. The staff recommendation is approval.
Move approval.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, Janelle?
Thank you.
I just would like to start out by reiterating the point that was made several times, that changes of zone like this are almost always unique in their situation. And that there are other locations, neighborhoods, business districts, where conscious decision was made in the past to locate the boundary between a business district and a residential district at the half-block line. When you look at this map of the College View area, you can see that by and large, that location is at the full-block line. And in this case, there's a change from that, a deviation from that to the half-block. And I tend to, when I consider applications like this, I do weigh the input from the surrounding neighbors fairly heavily. Here, we've got a case where there was not clear opposition. In other places, we may find that there is opposition, and that will change the complexion of the application. So, I don't feel strongly that I oppose this. I don't necessarily support conversion of residential to commercial just because it's next to commercial, but in this case, it seems not inappropriate.
Janelle? Okay. Yeah, initially, when I looked at this, I felt like this was really jutting into the neighborhood. And after they showed us the zoning maps and how the properties may change in the future, it kind of fit in a little better, in my opinion. And especially in a change of zone, I think about, you know, or listen to the neighbors if there's opposition, and there's apparently none here. And in fact, there may be some future change of zones down south. So, given that there was no negative reaction from the neighbors, they're going to improve the neighborhood, in my opinion. And if I lived in the neighborhood, I would think I would enjoy going to the new store more than I would the old store, so I tend to support that.
Kristen?
Yeah, I think this is a good redevelopment opportunity in an area that is seeing some blight. And the fact that somebody is willing to invest in this, and I think Casey's, everybody has said, is a good neighbor, and we appreciate that. And the fact that they're willing to put money into an area, and yes, it's on the borderline of a neighborhood, but we don't have opposition, I think it's a good thing, and I intend to support it.
And...
I just want to say too, I appreciate the staff report that has outlined the previous history because I think that's an important aspect of this. I run through College View maybe three times a week, and the changes that have occurred there over the past 10, 15 years are great.
there over the past 10, 15 years are great. I know that Union College is going to embark on a master plan process, and they've also, not expanded so much, but improved facilities. So I look at this as a continuum, and I think it's, again, I think we're creating opportunity with this, and it's a very rational kind of approach, I think, that's been going on.
Well, I agree and disagree with my colleagues. I do also think that this is a neighborhood that needs reinvestment and a good opportunity. I think a big key to my frustration is that, you know, several years ago, we had money in our city budget so that urban development could work with neighborhoods and developers to come up with redevelopment plans for areas, which I think was a really key, key thing. It talked about what's our vision, how do we get there, it encouraged reinvestment, and the fact that we've cut urban development so dramatically that we no longer provide that service, I think what we're seeing here is frustrating to me, because if we had that service to offer, then this might be a non-issue at all, because we would know, hey, we've talked about this, we've looked at it, we think this is a cool way for the neighborhood to grow. So I'm really disappointed that there's no money in the city budget for that anyways. I do think personally that this does encroach, there are houses all around, whether they're rentals or not, there are houses all around, and I think saying, well, in the future, we might change it to business, and then it won't encroach anymore, to me, that, I don't think that makes a lot of sense. I think we're looking at putting in a really large piece here, it's five lots in a neighborhood that has a lot of single lots, and although I think Casey's is a good neighbor, I don't think that this is the right development for this particular location. And I don't think that every time someone wants to redevelop something, we have to make it fit. I think sometimes people want to put something in, and it can be a great project for somewhere else, but maybe it doesn't work right here, and we've seen time and again where someone wanted to do something and were turned down, and we were told, well, nothing else will ever come in if we don't put this in, and yet, down the road, we have seen new things come in. And so, I just don't think this is a good fit, and I am not going to support the motion.
Anyone else?
Um, I do think this is a good project for this area, it fixes some split zoning issues, it improves some accessibility on this corner. I know from firsthand experience that this Casey's has been a good neighbor to the neighborhood, and we sincerely appreciate that. But it leaves me questioning, when I know that you guys have our content information and that you guys talk to us about other things, that why we weren't talked to about this, leaves me a little mystified. But, that being said, I agree with Commissioner Beecham, where she says it would be nice if we had some kind of vision, because there's so much going on in College View right now. We just, the item on the agenda right before this was basically catty corner, and I wish that we could have some unifying vision for this street and this area right here, because there's a lot of uncertainty, I think, with it as it currently sits. But I am going to vote to support this, just because it fixes up some things, and it will be a nice addition to the neighborhood.
I'm also going to support the application. I try to put my shoe, myself in the shoes of the neighbors in this area, and so, I find myself asking, do I want to live in a neighborhood that has a convenience store and easy access to gas station and services that I might want, especially as potentially a college student that would be walking back from Union College, and the answer to that is yes. And so, if the answer to that question is yes, do I want the best convenience store with the easiest access that, you know, makes things easier for me there, the answer to that is yes. And so, I have to support the redevelopment of what is there for a business that we all agree has been a good neighbor, who wants to reinvest in the neighborhood and make their facilities better for the neighborhood. So I'm going to support the application.
Call the vote, please. Weber?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Vermillion?
Yes.
Nejas?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion for approval carries eight to one. This is a recommendation to the city council. Calling for action, special permit 14054 for the expansion of a non-conforming use for the sale of alcohol for consumption off the premises on property generally located at South 48th Street and Meredith Street. The staff recommendation is conditional approval, and this is final action unless appealed to the city council.
Can I still ask a staff question on this? I think we've, I don't know if they're tied together that much or not.
Go ahead, ask one staff question.
Sorry, what was the question?
If the special permit is not approved for the expanding conforming, expanding non-conforming use for the sale of alcohol, how does that affect it? I mean, I know, could they still sell alcohol, just?
No, that special permit is going to have to be approved for them to sell alcohol from the new store.
Okay, so I didn't know if there was some kind of square footage that would already be grandfathered in, but no, okay.
Yeah, not with the way the site plan is proposed.
Sure. All right. Any comments on this particular?
Do you want to give Mark a chance to rebut? I suppose there's not.
Okay, let's entertain the motion then.
Move approval.
And discussion.
I just want to say one thing about, because now we're in the special permit, the previous application this afternoon at 48th and Pioneers, I banged on context a little bit. Actually applaud you, I know that this was not the planning department's first choice in terms of the orientation of the site. The problem I had at 48th and Pioneers was that there's a butt end of a building facing 48th Street on that previous application. You're facing 48th Street, the primary street here, with the front of the building and all of the active uses associated with that building, that's good context. So, I just wanted to, I didn't want anybody to think that I was wavering here in terms of my position on that, so this is good, in my opinion, and I'm going to support it.
And I'm also going to support the application, the Casey's there already is allowed the non-conforming use of sale of alcohol, this just allows the new and improved building to continue to sell alcohol, so I'm going to support the application. Call the vote, please. Weber?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Vermillion?
Yes.
Nejas?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion for conditional approval carries eight to one. Again, this is final action on the special permit unless appealed to the city council.
All right. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda may do so. All right, we will adjourn then.